Okay, five o'clock. Tonight is the first of three budget study sessions and we'll just let Jake take it from here.
Actually, I can kick it off and introduce Jake and the team here in just a second. But before we start off, I just want to clarify for council and those maybe watching at home that tonight we're presenting the 2022 budget, which is a balanced budget. And that's our goal every year when we bring forward a budget to city council. This budget is of course based off the 2020 and 2021 budget with projections for recovery from the COVID experience. Jake, Eric, Ashley and the department heads have worked diligently over the last six months to provide the budget that's going to be presented tonight. This last year's sales tax did slightly decline, but now they're rebounding much higher than projected right now. However, we do not, we do not yet know what the future of the Delta variant holds for our local economy and our regional economy as well. But thanks to conservative budgeting and prioritization, Brookings is in a very strong position. This, this next few meetings, staff will present to council the proposed 2022 budget, starting with tonight with operations and outside agencies, which is the September 14th workshop. September 28th, the proposed 10-year capital improvement plan and the fee schedule will be presented. And then we reserved October 12th as an optional work session should council wants to explore more items on the budget. Go ahead and hit the next slide Jake, thank you. August 24th, the first reading of the levy ordinance was held and tonight the second reading will be held to set the levy for the budget. October 26th, we'll hold the first budget ordinance reading for the 2022 budget. And just to clarify, this is a little different than last year. The state did allow this year, all municipalities the opportunity to wait a little bit longer in the budget process. And we're taking advantage of that opportunity to have more accurate sales tax numbers for this budget season. November 9th, we have projected out right now the second reading for the proposed adoption of the fee schedule, the capital improvement plan in the 2022 budget ordinance. But we do have additional meetings available should the council desire those as well. It's imperative that we take a little bit of time to understand the revenue sources and limited capabilities to add programs, projects and employees. I've heard in the past from outside agencies and organizations that the city has excessive revenues or the ability to add services. And we do have that ability, but through prioritization process. Or I've also heard that we have enough employees to take care of all the infrastructure and programs that we have today. And we do to an extent. The city is very agile and we're very effective and efficient with our limited revenue, resources and staffing levels that we have before us. Jake, go ahead and hit the next slide. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about our, our property tax comparisons to our peers, outside agencies and staffing levels, just so that those folks at home understand how we operate as an organization and where our revenues and budget goes to year after year. Brookings has one of the lowest property tax levies of peers across the state of South Dakota. And I've mentioned this a number of times. We're very proud of this, however, it does limit our ability to have sufficient staffing levels and operational programming. The data before you here looks at Aberdeen, Brookings, Watertown, Mitchell and Huron. What we've done is added the last five years of property tax for each community. You can see once again, Brookings has one of the lowest property tax revenue streams of all communities here. But yet Brookings still provides the same level of expected services. If not, in my opinion, humbly a greater quality of life here in this community. Go ahead and hit the next slide Jake, thank you. This slide here compares the Brookings mill levy revenue that we get for property taxes with the BMU transfer. Oftentimes I often hear from people that we receive money from BMU. And we do, we receive about two and a half million dollars. But we also give about a million of that back to BMU for water, for the hydrants, for hydrant maintenance. I'm sorry, for electricity, for our street lights, traffic lights and other things. For maintenance of those systems, which is right the way in which we have our relationship set up. But when you compare that revenue added to our, our property tax that we receive, what's going to receive about 3.7 million dollars. About 20% of our revenue source comes from property tax. And you add that BMU transfer, that gives us about 6.2 million. When you compare us to other communities with our existing, with their mill levies, what we would receive comparatively, we're always about two and a half, about $5 million short. Once again, I'm just showing this so that people understand where our revenue comes from and why we're limited with growth. I'm not asking for an increase in property taxes. Councils actually with state law cannot increase property taxes more than what the value is every year in the increase in growth. But once again, we do have to provide services comparable to our peer communities. Jake, if you want to add the next slide. In Brookings, we are very proud of how we work with our partners and outside agencies. Our total funding for economic and non-for-profit agencies is greater than any of our peers. You can see here, we looked at Aberdeen, Brookings, Watertown, Mitchell and Huron. Once again, we receive less revenue in property taxes than all of our peers. And the funding that we do give out or that we do budget is about a 1.7 million dollars. For all the pillow tax and 3B revenue that we do receive, all of that goes to our economic development agencies. With a few minor adjustments for city marketing projects. Approximately 3.7% of our general fund goes to outside agencies, which equates to about $600,000. Majority of that does go to our social service agencies, which help augment some of our own services here within the community are very necessary. Jake, go to the next slide. Over the past few slides, I've shared how Brookings receives two to $6 million less than our peer communities. Yet we do provide similar services, more services and higher quality of life than more, than more of our partners. Now, when I didn't mention that money that we give back to BMU, we do augment some of that loss with revenues from our liquor store in the override, which helps to augment that loss. However, we also fund outside agencies at greater levels than peer communities, giving a total of 1.7 million. I've stated we have limited resources. This data came from a staffing analysis we did earlier this year. And as you can see, we do analysis of peer college towns, but also peer towns here in South Dakota. And we have about half the employees that most of our peers have. However, we continue to do more in similar services as our peers. An example that I always give, we have 20,000 trees that we take care of in this town with four arborists. We have roughly twice the acres of parkland with about a third of the workforce. But that's because our employees are dedicated, as are our department heads. And they'll continue to work hard. But when we do compare other communities, you know, the devil's in the details. Some of these communities have a full-time fire department. Some of these communities have more public works or more utilities. And so there are some nuances when you look at this data. We have within this budget that we're going to present you tonight, a number of employees that we've identified, but we're not bringing forward within the budget. Throughout the city council strategic planning session, we were committed to identifying employees, but we're also committed to identifying opportunities for efficiencies that we can make internally before we make that request. Because any one employee that we do add to our budget is an ongoing expense for quite some time. And so we owe that to council. But when we do cut for our programming or outside agencies, we also cut our operations. This evening, I'll also share with council and the public items that we did cut within our own operations to balance this budget before you today. Over the last few years, about every year, we cut anywhere from 750,000 to about a million dollars within our programming. Department heads are also here to provide any assistance that you might have as well. Jake, you want to go to the next slide? This slide here depicts the future of our budget. Every year we go through the same scenario. There's never enough revenue to offset the expenditures and the growth of expenditures. And the desire to add more employees is there, but the ability to is never there. And so this looks out at the, over the next four years. And you can see every year, the light blue is the revenue projected and the, the aqua color is the expenditures projected. And as we look to add employees, it always ends up being a deficit. And this is just a high level projection. Eric, Jake and Ashley and the department heads, they're embarking on endeavor this year to, to develop a 10-year operating plan. So that council, when you, when you prioritize a specific project, program or employees that you'd like to add to the budget, we could show you where that can be implemented and how it impacts our overall budget. What's going to just proper budgeting for the future. Jake, go to the next slide. With that, I'm happy to introduce Jake, Eric and Ashley to present the proposed 2020 budget, 22 budget. And then I believe I'll cover the last slide as well.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Good evening, members of the council, mayor. Excited to be here tonight to present the budget. And that's an ill-timed phone call. We'll go ahead and ignore that. So what we're going to present to you tonight is a balanced budget. What we mean by a balanced budget is that your revenues are equal to your. Oh, yep. Is that better? Yep. So what we'll present tonight is a balanced budget for mayor, council and members of the public. What that means is that your revenues coming in are equal to your expenditures going out. So that we're providing a sustainable budget where we're not dipping into reserves and we're able to fund our operations with the revenues that we're coming in, essentially living within our means. We'll do that tonight for the general fund, our capital improvement plan, as well as our 3B and pillow tax. So all budgets presented to council tonight are balanced. One of the changes from last year, as Paul mentioned, is that we'll be having positive sales tax growth. With COVID last year, we are actually projecting a deficit or declining amount of sales tax. As we get into this budget presentation a little bit deeper, you'll see we're estimating a two and a half percent sales tax growth from 2021 estimates. That is a very realistic and attainable number. By and large, we see between a three to three and a half percent increase in our sales tax year over year. So again, we still continue to implement those conservative budgeting practices. And the next slide, you'll see that our general fund is increasing by about 640,000 from 2021 adopted. Again, I would remind council and members of the public, when we adopted the 2021 budget, we were very uncertain with COVID and we had really tightened the belt as much as we could. This is really bringing back some of those core operational aspects for the city, as well as budgeting and increases for employees as well. Overall, this budget is lean and streamlined. We continue to try to provide the high-quality services that the residents are used to without making any additions. This does present an efficient and organizational improvement as we have the public works department. We continue to try to find streamlined operations, as well as taking advantage of efficiencies within our organization. We as staff try to make this budget as intuitive as possible, not only for the council, but for the members of the public, so that everything they see tonight makes sense and is easy to follow. One of the documents I would point to is our budget in brief. That is a two-page document that was included in our packet this evening. And that breaks down our budget into two pages from a very high level to see where our revenues come from, where they're going, some of our major projects, as well as our five focus areas that really drive our decision-making and processes. Lastly, this is a sustainable budget. As mentioned, it is balanced and we do this with the intention of building a stronger Brookings and paving a sustainable financial future. So this is your 2022 budget at a glance. The requested budget is on the, my right, possibly some of your lefts. And then 2021 is on the other side there. You will notice that the overall budget from 21 to 22 is about a little over a million dollar decrease from about 54 million down to 52.8. The large reason for that is just the project timing, as we have large capital projects coming on in our enterprise funds or capital improvement program that can change the overall size of our budget. For example, back in 2020, we had about a $55 million budget due to a $2 million project out at the landfill. So there is some fluctuation there as we have project timing, especially those larger projects. As you'll note, the general fund is up about 600,000 from about 16.8 in 21 to about 17.5 in 22. Again, that is just, we're seeing the rebounding in the economy and more of a normal year of budgeting, if you will, there. With your general fund, as a reminder, that is your primary operating fund, which includes police, fire, parks, community development and engineering. You may notice that there is a substantial decrease in special revenue and debt service from about 12 million down to 8.7. That again is largely due to project timing. This year, we were taking on the 15th and 7th Ave improvements, which included streets, stormwater, so on and so forth, as well as the Jefferson Avenue drainage project, which we highlight regularly in our progress report. Enterprise funds, we do see some increases there. Those are primarily attributed to liquor, landfill and the airport, which we'll cover in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. And this is meant to be a semi-informal presentation. So council, if you have questions at any time, please interrupt and ask those as they're top of mind. Some of our major changes for 2022, this budget really solidifies the public works department. What you may notice in the budget detail sheets is that the engineering budget is now blank. That's been absorbed as part of 430, so 101-430, which is the public works budget. That includes the engineering budget as well. We do maintain the street division as a separate budget as it is, as it is one of our larger cost centers, about 3.8 million dollars or so. And lastly, our solid waste division, that is an enterprise fund broken down into collections, which is fund 612 and the landfill, which is account 625. One of the items you may notice as we get a little further into the presentation, our non-departmental expenses have been further reduced. That's been a continuous effort by staff to take those non-departmental funds and appropriately cost allocate those to the departments. That creates greater accountability for our department heads to know who is responsible for which funds and allows us to better specify what those funds are geared towards. Lastly, this budget does add three additional E901 dispatchers. As Paul mentioned, the staffing analysis showed that we had a need in our E911. And that is the area that we're able to add or recommend adding this year. And it was supported by the joint E911 board, which is comprised of city and county representatives. Next, we'll go through a few of our primary tax sources or primary revenue sources. You have sales tax, property tax, the triple B, which is your bed, booze and board, as well as your pillow or business improvement district tax. So what you're seeing here on this slide is a little bit of historicals to show how we ended up at our 2022 budget projections. As Paul noted, the change in state law where we were able to do these budgets a little bit later in the year allows us as staff to provide better estimates, which helps us from a revenue and expenditure side as we project these out. So you'll see that the 2022 estimate projected at an eight percent contraction. From there, we, for 21, we projected a two-thirds recovery from that 2020 estimate. That 2020 estimate is where we project will end as a city at the end of the year, which represents a 3.2% increase from the 2021 budget. Our 2022 budget number is based off of the estimate of 2021, and that is a two and a half percent growth. As mentioned earlier, that is a very realistic and attainable number. We do see between three and three and a half percent growth, sales tax year over year. But again, we do want to be conservative and make sure that we're not living with outside of our means or run into a situation of having a budget shortfall next year. So this helps mitigate against that. Property tax is formulaic. So what we're allowed to increase our property tax by is CPI and growth. So this year, we're, we're showing a 4.3 through 4.4% increase in our property tax levy overall. That is again, broken down by the CPI and growth factors. Those numbers are provided to us by Brookings County Finance. Usually our property tax is about a three and a half percent increase. We're seeing a little bit larger increase or allowed increase this year. We had a couple of TIF districts close for affordable housing projects. So essentially those have now come online, if you will, in our property tax calculation. And that shows a higher growth factor than we may see on a more traditional year. Staff does recommend utilizing the full annual increase due to the compounding effect. If we don't take that full increase year over year, that's money that we leave on the table that we'll never get back unless we go to a vote of the people and request an opt-out in property tax. As Paul mentioned, we do have one of the lowest municipal property tax levies amongst our peer. The only one that is lower is Watertown, which is very slight. As you can see, Vermillion, Pier College Town significantly higher over double, as well as Huron, Aberdeen, Mitchell, all have much higher property tax levies than we see here in the city. One of the things we understand or hear as staff is that there may be a perception that most of the property taxes that we collect actually come to the city, which is actually untrue. The city collects the lowest percentage of property tax out of all that's collected. This year, we've updated this slide to look at a $300,000 home, which we estimate will generate about $4,800 in property taxes. 58% of that would go to the school district, about $2,800. 26% goes to Brookings County, which is about 1,250. And then again, the smallest percentage of that goes to the city at 16%, which is $760 or $770. This is our bed, booze and board tax, often equated to a tourism tax. Again, similar graphs as we've seen with the other slides. So in 2020, we estimated a 35% contraction. For the 2021 budget, we estimated that we would have a 50% recovery. Right now, we're projecting through the end of 2021 that our estimate will exceed budget by eight percent. And then in 2022, representing a three and a half percent growth from our end of year estimate. Again, a very conservative and attainable number there. I would also draw attention that our 2022 budget is actually less projected revenue than what we had in 2019. So we are about three years behind right now and we're, we're expecting revenues largely due to the impact from COVID-19. Next up is the pillow tax. So this is your business improvement district. It's $2 a night for every hotel stay. When folks look into our budget book, it'll actually show up as $500,000. This isn't to give the impression that we expect to collect $500,000. We can only collect as much as we budget. So if we were to budget, say 200,000 and we bring in 242, we would be capped at 200. So always budget high in case we have an unexpectedly good year and we're able to take advantage of that full budget amount there. Again, here, 2020 was an estimate we saw or expected a 50% contraction. 2021 budget was at a 50% recovery. The 21, or the 2021 estimate exceeds that budget by about 19%. And we're estimating another 20% growth from our estimate this year. Again, very conservative and attainable numbers as we are actually projecting 2022 revenue to still fall below the 2019 actual revenue received. You do see some larger increases here, and that's because this was one of our harder-hit areas from COVID-19. So we are expecting a larger recovery. So again, this next slide here, this is an overview of our revenue and expenditures for the general fund. The 2022 expenditures show essentially where the money goes that comes into the general fund. The money on, from the revenue side shows where the money comes from. About 74% of your general fund expenditures go to public safety, public works and parks, recreation and forestry. So that is your largest chunk there. About 82, 83% of your revenues come from property tax, sales tax and transfers. On the coming slides, we have a little bit more detail on these, this information. So again, here, this is a breakdown of your general fund revenue sources. Again, seeing that sales tax is your highest, that's about 42, 43% of your total. Then you have your property taxes we've covered. Transfers are comprised of a number of different sources. About two and a half million dollars comes from Brookings Municipal Utilities, about 380,000 from the liquor store, 470,000 from the Brookings Regional Landfill. And then we do have the Research and Technology Center, which contributes about 40,000 in there as well. Your departmental fees, those are ones that are generated at the department level. So these are your permitting fees, fines and forfeitures through the police department, any recreation fees, pool fees, things of that nature. Intergovernmental encompasses a number of different state and county taxes that comes into the city. Your other includes your licenses, interest income, franchise fees, cell phone tower rental. And your largest contribution to other is the liquor override. The liquor override encompasses about 730,000 of that 1.1 million in the other. These are your expenditure detail breaking down. You will see some increases in here. Again, these numbers do reflect an increase to staff in this upcoming year. It also does represent the bringing back of travel and training and some other items that were cut during the COVID-19 budget. You'll notice about an eight and a half percent increase for administration. That's largely a part-time, halftime deputy city clerk position that was added after the 21 adopted budget. As I mentioned earlier, you're seeing the non-departmental decrease about 20%. That's further reducing that and cost allocating out into the individual departments. Finance, H R I T. We've identified some software programs and process improvements there to include an H R I S system, as well as internal audit and payroll efficiencies. Your transfer there, you'll may notice is the largest percent increase of all the different funding areas. That is entirely made up by the transfer to cover the additional dispatch positions that we're adding in E911. That's about $137,000 there. Lastly, you're seeing your appropriations and subsidies increase. We'll propose a modest increase to the social service agencies and also bringing back the research park at SDSU to its 2019 funding level. Special revenue debt service, again, this is one that was down fairly significantly year over year. Would just highlight that this is predominantly timing in your storm, or your special assessment in your storm drainage funds. We had the Jefferson Ave Storm Drainage Project this year, as well as the 15th and 7th project were, which were costly projects. You will notice that if you look year over year, the triple B and the pillow tax are increasing. That's just a result of the improving economy that we're seeing from 2021 and into 2022. Eric, I'd ask him to go over the Swiftill Operating Transfer.
Sure. As you can see in, in the chart, our expected subsidy to the Swiftill Center for 2022 is expected to decrease about 20% from the 2020s level. And this is driven by Spectra Revenue Management New Performal Contract, which is focused on increasing the event volume and increasing the sponsorship revenue as well, which translates in a decrease of subsidy from the city to the event center.
Thank you, Eric. So these are your enterprise funds. As a reminder for council and the public, enterprise funds are supposed to operate as a business and operate at a surplus, if you will. You'll see there on the upper right, what that table is really showing you is for each of our enterprise funds, where they're going to be projected at the end of the year. So all of your enterprise funds, except for the golf course and the airport, operate at a surplus. The airport needs to be subsidized in terms of operations, as well as capital improvements. Similarly, for the golf course, there is a subsidy in there from other funds for operations and capital improvements. Year over year, your enterprise funds increased are projected to increase about 1.6 million from 21. As a reminder, 21 was a bit of a down year in terms of projects and things of that nature. Like I was mentioning, we had the large $2 million cell construction in 2020 out at the landfill. That 1.6 million dollar increase year over year is driven by the airport liquor and landfill funds. Airport is all project timing. Landfill increases are a combination of project timing, increased equipment maintenance and service provision costs, as well as making sure that we're properly accounting for our reserves in accordance with state statutes. Lastly, the liquor increase is driven by product purchases, but they're also projecting increased revenues to offset those purchases. For the liquor fund, again, that's increasing the amount of product that's purchased because we're seeing an increase in product that's being sold. The liquor fund does include the liquor pass-through. Previously, we had called that out individually, but starting last year, we did put that into the liquor fund itself. The liquor budget is not 10.9 million. The pass-through is about 6.8 million of that number. So we do see about a $4 million liquor budget, which is in line with years previous. Last item we'll cover for tonight's presentation are the outside agencies. The first outside agencies are the triple B, the CIP and the BID. So those are the funding sources for these agencies. As you'll notice, highlighted in red, the city, this is our first year of the contribution to the Performing Arts Center. This is an agreement that council had entered into previously to make those contributions. So this is year one of that agreement. That's $917,000 that will continue for the next five or six years or so. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Economic Development, those organizations, as well as the chamber, are projected to go back to about their 2019 levels. Again, they did see small decreases in 2020, a larger decrease in 21 due to COVID. So the recommendations up there tonight are in line with their 2019 funding levels that we had seen in the past. The health system, when there is a commitment, again, that council had made for some improvements that have been made there, the city is now beginning those $100,000 payments. Those again will occur for the next five or six years or so. The SDSU Student Visitor Promotion, they do ask for about 50,000 every year. Through discussions with them, they have some reserve funding left over at about 25,000. The recommended 25,000 for them would get them at that $50,000 desired level. And then lastly, the Arts Commission, about 46,000. Again, that's based on capital projects and function of timing. Lastly, is outside agencies that are funded through the general fund. Research Park at SDSU, again, the 150,000 is in line with where they were at in 2019. They did see a fairly significant decrease in 21, as all the economic development agencies did. School District, again, in line with previous funding amounts. Contract for Services with the Humane Society, Arts Council in line with previous amounts. Communities Council, the 7,500 would be in line with their 2020 allocation. I would note they did request 12,500. Community Band at 6,000 is in line with previous years. Farmers Market did not submit an application in 2021. They did have some turnover in staffing there and they did submit an application for 22, recommending them at an amount that was close to their previous averages. Lastly, the social service agencies, we did fund about 225,000 in 21. We are recommending a $15,000 increase at 240,000 for those agencies. Of that 240,000, we would earmark 5,000 for the United Way. As a reminder, the United Way does run our outside agency process. They take in the applications, they develop criteria based on council feedback and ultimately make a recommendation to council at the funding levels for the various agencies. Of that 5,000, about 3,500, a little over, would be for software, which they had to upgrade to allow the processing of our application. And a remaining 1,500 would be a small administrative fee for the significant time and effort that they put in in processing those applications and making recommendations to council. In terms of outside agencies, on the social service side, we do expect United Way to come before council in October, November to take in your priorities for this upcoming outside agency or social service funding. And then in 21 or January or February of 21, they would come back with a funding recommendation for council to review, modify if desired and ultimately approve. With that, I would turn it back over to Paul to cover our closing slide.
Thanks Jake.
Thanks, Jake. Every year, as I mentioned at the very beginning, staff cuts right around close to $1 million out of our operating budget. Thought I'd take this opportunity this year to share with the public what that means to our operations. So you can see, we broke it down into four specific areas. The first one is projects and services. And apologize, my eyes are getting old here. Out of the library, we are cutting close to $5,000 out of our audio and visual material. We do still have remaining $31,000 in that line item. Programming within the library, we did cut close to $17,500. But I will tell council, we did request an increased funding from the city or from the county back to historical levels. I'm not sure yet where they're at with their funding subsidy requests. We also did cut holiday decorations within the street system for about $11,000 and soccer goals from the Parks Department for $10,000. Now, though, I'm going through a lot of these items and telling you what we've cut. Historically, we do end the year with positive excess dollars because sales tax comes in better than expected. Expenditures, we don't quite meet, or other revenues come in better than anticipated. We then give that amount through Eric's CFO report to city council, and city council generally will refund a lot or fund a lot of these priorities, prioritized projects. So just because we cut them doesn't mean they might not come before you again here in the near future if revenues come in better than projected. It's a very conservative way of budgeting to ensure that we can still fund what we need for the operations. Under the financial stability, just a couple of things I would call out there. We had determined this year to contact out with a risk and liability firm right around $20,000 to take a look at our process to make sure that we're fully covered and to see if there's any opportunities to minimize that risk and liability and ultimately reduce that cost to the organization. We're also doing an internal audit. We started this process here a few months ago. It's something that most municipalities across the nation do not do, but Eric brought it to us as a CFO. It's an opportunity to ensure we're offering best practices similar to the business with the internal auditing process. We did contract out with a firm to do this. The intention was to have a third party follow up with the results to implement, but because we can't afford it, we cut it, which means Eric and his staff will take on the work, meaning less time for Eric to be innovative in the future. Once again, this is just a process that we have to go through in order to ensure that we can provide the services that we're recommending within this balanced budget. Personnel item, these are a number of personnel that we've identified. You recall that list I showed that we're severely deficient in a number of departments. We've identified the number that we need within the organization. But our next step is now to look and see if there's efficiencies that we can make through software, through contracting out, and ultimately bring that back to you in a future meeting once we have that 10-year operational plan in place where we can insert these employees. Finally, we have a number of workplace upgrades that we had, which is fairly minimal, but they do provide safety measures for the facilities noted here in here. Animal control contract, for example, to allow for security cameras out there that we don't have. Our new cages as well for the animals. We did have to cut the holiday party, I believe, about $10,000 to $15,000. But once again, if we have money at the end of this year, that's one of the things we'd bring back for recommending to fund fully in the future. Once again, this is just an opportunity to explain some of the things that our department heads and operations cut. When I went back to them and said, "We need to cut further. What can we cut?", and they came forward with these recommendations. At the end of the day, I appreciate everything that Jake, Eric, and Ashley do, but just as important, the employees and the department heads. They really step up year after year, identify where we can cut to make sure that we can provide you with a balanced budget. With that, turn it over to council for any questions. Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on the outside agency funding. The first slide that outlines those agencies. I've noticed that we have rolled up, I don't know that we have, but I think the Chamber has rolled up their overall dollar amount in their request, that $87,500. And I know that at one time, when we arrived at that number, it was with the expectation on behalf of the council that a piece of that would be funding a downtown-focused position. And so I was wondering if they had provided any additional information about that piece of the funding that was initially designed to be dedicated specifically to the downtown director position?
Yep, absolutely. So of that $87,500, they do break it down a little bit further. $30,000 of that is a desire to go to the Chamber General, if you will. The other $57,500 is identified as going to the downtown for programming, the position, the Downtown Committee, and things of that nature. So a previous breakdown of that had gone to partly to fund the Downtown at Sundown event as well as the position, that $57,500.
That would be an area that I'd want us to explore as a council. I think the nature of, there's been a vacancy in that position. I think the nature of the position that will be replacing that Downtown Director has shifted. And I think as a council, we have to decide whether or not that still aligns with the spirit of the original intent behind some of those dollars that we were directing to the Chamber. I think we were pretty clear at the time, but of course, there were different folks at the table. So I just think that Chamber line item is one I would want us to peel back a bit more before we assume $87,500 is the right number to still meet the, what was the original intent of the council in directing those dollars?
Councilmember Brink.
I have a similar question on this slide related to the economic development line. And my question there is, I believe that that office used to have several positions, workforce development, entrepreneurship, and things like that that might not be there currently. So what is the, what is the change in expectation that we can expect with that? And were there any details in the application that would give us some indication of what the plan is there?
Yeah, appreciate the question. At the time, they would have submitted this as they're due around June 1. Likely, they may have been operating at a different level than where they may be at today. I can give you a rough breakdown of what that budget kind of signified in the past. So of that $215,000, $50,000 of that does come from Brookings Municipal Utilities through the transfer that they give to the city. They earmark $50,000 to go to B D C., so that's $50,000 of that. You're left with $165,000 that comes from the city general, if you will. $103,000 for that in the past have been identified as general economic development activity. $42,000 of that is for retail, and the last $20,000 piece is for workforce development. As Councilmember Brink stated, there were different funds given from the city with the understanding that there would be targeted efforts in those areas.
I would further add that right now, the Brookings Economic Development Corporation is also going through a strategic planning process, identify who they are today and who they want to be in the future. So if council has any comments or recommendations or thoughts on that, now would be a great time for them to hear that as well, or at the next budget meeting. And if council would like to know more from some of these outside agencies, we can make sure that they're there as well. I do know Andrew, Kelsey, and Laura are on the phone. At least, they were attempting to call in. So if there are specific questions for them, we could have them answer that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you. I missed that our outside agencies were on the phone, so I suppose if Ms. Doom from the Chamber was available on the phone, I would just ask directly for maybe a better sense of what the position that is maybe designed to replace that Downtown Director position looks like and if we can get a little clearer sense of what the vision for that is. If she were ready to speak to that tonight, I'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay? This is Kelsey.
You can. Go ahead, Kelsey.
Perfect. So yeah, as Jake stated, $30,000 of that is going to the Chamber General to do programming, events, partnership programs within the city. $57,500 is for Downtown Brookings. $27,500 of that is for Downtown at Sundown, and that $30,000 remaining is to the Downtown Brookings Committee. It's my understanding that the money was to go to help fund a position. 2019, the eight months that Ashley was on full-time as Downtown Director, and all of 2020, we allocated majority, I would say 80% to 90% of her time to Downtown, realizing the sustainability of a budget and trying to make it a long-term project for the Chamber to keep it under our umbrella. We put that position to halftime downtown, and Ashley was able to continue all of the programming and services at a halftime position. We then, quote unquote, would charge, I guess, the budget of the downtown, 50% of that payroll expense instead of taking it all on. What that did was the projected budget for Downtown, I believe, once I put it through, let me pull up this quickly. When I put it through 2024, if we kept it on as full-time, it would have been... Just one moment here. At the end of 2024, if we were to continue as we were, we would be in the hole $80,500. And so seeing that that's not sustainable, we put her at halftime, and now we're able to make it through 2026 and continue building a steady stream to keep us going. So does that answer your question, Nick? And I'd be willing to supply these numbers and even a brief presentation if that's necessary.
Thank you for that. I think it was helpful to understand the breakdown of even within the dollars dedicated to Downtown, how the organization has been deploying those dollars. I think for us, it's the next step is to decide whether or not we feel like there's a return on investment for those dollars. That was helpful to understand within the umbrella how those are being deployed. Thank you.
Councilmember Brink.
I would ask a similar question of Mr. Slas if he's on the phone to help us understand in light of changes with B D C., what the return on investment would be for specifically the retail and the workforce development components of this anticipated budget?
Andrew, are you available to answer that question? Andrew? I know he was driving to Pier tonight, so I imagine he's probably in that area. We can make sure that he's available at the next meeting for you. Okay. Anybody else on council have any questions for anybody here? I have to thank the department heads for being here. Always putting out extra time during our budget sessions. So if there aren't any other questions... Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually don't have a question. I was wondering if Jake could bring up that second to last slide. It's number 29. I think as a counselor, this was really enlightening for me, and I think it's information that we haven't always had access to, just to have an understanding of how collaborative the process is and what, you know, for lack of a better term, what the wish list starts with, but then how it has to be whittled down to fit within the confines of a budget. This is really helpful, and I think it's a companion to what eventually may be a 10-year staffing and personnel plan, which I think makes fantastic sense in particular because we've seen what it's done with capital projects over time and the way we've been able to prioritize and forecast. So this slide was really enlightening for me, and I appreciated it. And it certainly tells the tale of how thoughtful our department heads and core staff are about, you know, what the needs are, but what is realistic year to year. So I really appreciated having a broader conversation on what got left on the table. We so often really focus on what's in the budget, not what was not able to be funded this year. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brink.
I had one last question, just on the detail for outside agency funding for the Humanities Council. Jake, if you happen to know, I believe that the higher request of $12,500 is due to an in Brookings event that would be planned in 2022. And I just wondered if we have any historical precedent for allocating them a little bit higher amount in years when they have their big annual event in the community of Brookings versus somewhere else where we could draw some tax revenue?
Yeah, so the only time that the Humanities Council actually requests funding from the city is on those even number years when the event is in the city. So as you'll notice, in '21, they weren't funded because when they're not in Brookings, they actually don't ask for any funding amounts. So 2020 was the last year that they were supposed to be in Brookings. I believe they had to go virtual with that event due to COVID. They were recommended to be funded at $7,500. I know that they do provide a wonderful event for the community, the SD Festival of Books. They bring in thousands of folks as well as artists and such into the community. So it is a wonderful event for the community. But again, this is just a number to achieve a balanced budget and aligns with what they were funded in 2020. As staff, we're certainly open to council thoughts or sentiments on that.
This is a question for Eric. Eric probably could pull this one off quick. I don't know if you've got quick math or not, but our mill levy is 2.521. And so I'm looking at Water Towns, 2.432, and then Spearfish is 2.746. What if we changed that mill levy? And I realize this has to be a vote of the public. What would the difference in revenue be if we went 2.721? Just tick it, bring it two ticks up.
So that's actually the slide that Paul presented. It's the second, that one, the second one. So what this shows is if averaging with our city valuation, add their levy, that's how much we would get. So that's, so if we were to have their tax mill with our current valuation, we would be getting $9 million. That was your question?
I guess if we changed our mill levy... Okay, so what you're saying is if we had the mill levies these other towns would have, that's the income that we would have?
Yes.
Okay. Paul, what would it take? What would it take for us to bring this to the public to say, "Would you consider this"? Is this something that we have to bring on? Maybe our city clerk would have to explain that to us a little bit?
Well, first and foremost, I think what we'd have to do is have a study session. Probably many conversations with council to talk about what those funds would be utilized for. You know, we identified the employees, but we still have to do our due diligence to make sure that it's warranted. I've said this once and I've said this before. Anytime government increases revenues, we always grow into it. So we want to make sure that any increase in revenue is justified. And so at a staffing process, first, we'd have to do that analysis, bring it back to you for a recommendation. As far as putting it on the ballot, you could always have a special, Bonnie could, or Steve could probably talk to us. You could always have a special election or put it as part of the general election. But Steve, maybe you can talk further about that.
Well, I think one of the first things we would do also would be to do a legal review based on the property tax freeze to determine, you know, what range of choices we would have before we'd even get to looking at the election process.
Just throwing that out there, just curious as to what process we would go through if we did change the mill levy. How long have we had this mill levy? Has anybody got any idea? What was the history on that?
Well, every year, it does increase based on the valuation and the growth. And so we do adjust it every year. So it does increase slightly every year. It grows about 3% to 4% every year. But because we're starting at such a lower number compared to other municipalities, what I understand is back in the '90s, early 2000s, we cut ourselves artificially because we're receiving money from B M U, roughly a couple million dollars. We didn't need the excess property tax, so therefore we dropped it, which we should. If you don't need the money, you drop the levy. Unfortunately, at that point in time, the state did put in a freeze and had this formula. So we're starting at a much lower base than our peer communities. It is what it is to an extent. I know that when you do put a ballot out there, a request, you're competing with those other public entities, such as the schools and county as well.
Good. Just had to ask a question. Patty or Holly, I'm sorry.
I was just curious. I know that we had started approaching the outside agency funding with United Way. I'm wondering if they've been involved in that process already up to this point and how that process has gone?
Yeah, so United Way will be providing city council with an impact analysis from the funding that you provided last year. As Jake mentioned, Heidi with United Way will be coming back in October, November timeframe to make that request from council to create that rubric. Other than that, we have been having ongoing discussions on the ARP money specifically. Now, it's outside the budget, but that's that federal dollars. What's truly needed in the community for outside agencies? You have about three to four years to spend that money. So our thought as a staff is to break that down into sections and try to triage as you go through the process of COVID because we don't know what's going to happen next year. So we've been in discussions with some of the nonprofits throughout the community. Eric is talking to our consultant because we can't just give them money because it has to be committed towards COVID funds and expenditures. So it's a delicate dance, but we hope to have more information to you guys in the very near future.
Any other questions? Okay, so Wayne?
I just had a question on if we see something on here that we think deserves more funding, is this the time to talk about it or is it later on?
I think at any point... I think at any point in time, uh, city council has the opportunity to start bringing those discussions up. The sooner I think the better, um, because we do have the public hearing starting in October. And so the sooner you can start having those discussion, what should be funded further. Um, my recommendation has always been with outside agencies, uh, to keep that as a pool. And if you want to fund one over the other, then take from others. Otherwise, if you want to fund more from the general fund, then we have to go into the budget and start cutting. And I would ask council to prioritize what that might be.
Okay, if we're, if it's something's listed on here by itself, like I'm looking at the community band. Um, that one is just, um, I know that was a kind of a, one of the first things that kind of came back and kind of made the community feel normal again is we all got together in the park and, and listened to that music. And I know they're pretty dedicated to that and don't have a lot of revenue sources. So I was just, you know, if it's, two thousand dollars is really not a big part of our budget. Kind of symbolism, and if we're going to have the symbolism, I'd rather have them have more money and, uh, encourage that activity.
And, and what I would just ask, you know, if, if you want to make that as part of a change, if you have a recommended who you would decrease for that two thousand dollars, um, that would help us out as well.
Mm-hmm. Don't have that part. I want you to figure that out.
One thing I will tell you is the community band did work very well with us last year. Last year they chose not to hold the event, and so they returned the monies that city council, uh, committed to them. But what we then did is reallocated those to outside agency through non-for-profits. We gave an additional, I believe, forty thousand dollars last year, so that was part of those funds. So the community band has been very good to work with. However, I do know that some of their monies are going to put up to, to create a reserve. Um, and I can't remember if it's for equipment or what have you, but nonetheless, it is a reserve. But it is a great event. I enjoy going to it in the summer.
I know they have some reduction in their fundraising efforts too. I think they generally have a fundraiser at the Arts Festival, which was affected some way by COVID, I think.
Paul, I, may I add to that? Um, so Paul's right, they do have a reserve. Uh, we reviewed this with them a year or two previous. It is for equipment. Um, what it was explained to me is that they have a, a fairly sizable reserve, um, because they're relying on instruments from SDSU, is my understanding. So they started to put the plan in place if they didn't have access to those SDSU instruments, how would they begin to replace instruments? So they do have a fairly healthy reserve, and it didn't seem that there would be any loss of those instruments from SDSU in the, in the near future.
Holly, did you have a question?
I was just going to mention that, um, since we do have a new council member, um, in, involved in the budget process, it might be helpful to explain how we come to these numbers when we get the request and then how it, we come to the recommendation. That might just be helpful so that we all can understand kind of what that process is.
Yeah, so first of all, what we do is, is we put together the budget and then try to determine what we can allocate for outside agencies. Within your governance and N's policy, it does state that you can give up to four percent of the overall revenue or expenditures, Jake?
Expenditures.
Thank you, expenditures. And so we, we, uh, put that as part of the formula and tried to get as close as we can to that four percent, knowing that we're growing, um, sales tax, property tax and other things while still trying to fund everything else. It doesn't say we have to give four percent, but over the last three years, we've really increased that amount. I would say we are closer to three percent. Now we're closer to that three point seven percent, almost three point eight percent is what we give to outside agencies. What we tried to do then is take that dollar amount that we have available and look at their request and then make a recommendation based on that request and based also on the application process. We look at everything from what they have available in the reserves, uh, to what the request and their funding, uh, level is and what they've gone, gotten historically. So that's our, our best recommendation, but at the end of the day, if council wants to play with those numbers, add more, uh, take away from one or the other, that's, it, it, that goes for the entire budget. It's, it's at the end of the day, city council's budget, this is just our recommendation. Now for outside service agencies or social service agencies, we try to always put some type of increase in there because there's always a need for social service agencies. Um, what we've done here this last year is we worked with Heidi from United Way to create a process. She comes in, talks to council, listens to your priorities, creates a rubric. Uh, they then have an application process which any outside agency can make a request. You don't have to be a member of the United Way. The United Way then has a number of individuals that, uh, have been educated on how to review these applications based on the rubric. And then they bring back a recommendation to city council. And ultimately, it's up to city council to make that decision. They could take it, move forward with it, or they can change those dollars amounts too as they see fit.
Patty, do you have any questions? Okay. I said, I, I don't have any right now at the moment either. We do have regular meetings starting at six thirty, so we've got about a half hour layover. It is six thirty, right? Or is it supposed to be six? Okay, all right, just making sure. I guess we can call this meeting adjourned and wait till, uh, six thirty meeting then. Thank you. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for this pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Uh, will the clerk please take attendance?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Collins is the only member absent.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda, agenda. Is there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing no comment, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, uh, item five A, introduction of new city Brookings employee. Paul, will you, uh, take the honors?
Thank you, Charlie, here in the audience. Come forward. It's my honor to introduce Charlie Richter. Charlie Richter is our new city engineer. Charlie comes from out on the East Coast, uh, but relocating here to Brookings. I believe, uh, you have family here in the community, and I know you've visited here quite a few times over the past ten years, I know for sure. Let me talk a little bit about your background, who you are, and introduce yourself to not only the council, but the public watching at home as well.
Uh, yes, um, um, my wife, I'm, my wife's from, uh, Brookings, and, uh, we've got, uh, she's got a lot of family still in the, the Brookings area. Um, so when this opportunity came up, we thought it would be a, a great way to reconnect with family. Uh, during the pandemic, it was, uh, it was tough to, to visit family and, um, there was periods of ti- long periods of time before we got to see our in-laws, and this was our chance to get even closer now. So, um, so we're very excited to be here. My, my kids have been very excited about coming, um, and I'm very excited to start this, this new venture.
Uh, for those that don't know, Charlie, you were a prior city engineer in a, in a town of, I believe, ten to fifteen thousand out on the East Coast. Can you talk a little bit about your experience and, and background?
Uh, yes, I, I've been in municipal engineering for over twenty years. Uh, I have worked for, uh, the, the, the city of Wakefield in Massachusetts and, uh, most recently for the town of Lynnfield as the town engineer. So I've, I've been, I've got a lot of experience to, to, to bring to this, this job. Uh, I can see, I see things that are, um, that, that are done here that, uh, I can, I can definitely add to, so.
Thank you, Charlie. We're really excited to have Charlie as part of the organization and, and, uh, part of our organization and the employees, uh, leading the, the engineering division, uh, including Stormwater as well as the airport. Uh, looking forward to working with you here, Charlie.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item five B, the presentation of the vaccine incentive program. Uh, Eric Gringle, CFO, and Michael Logan, Swiftel Center Manager, will present this item.
Good evening. I'd like to start by giving a little, a little bit of an overview of how this program was designed. Um, so the main funding source for this program is the American Rescue Program Funding, which allows for an incentive program under the federal rules of this program. And then, um, the SDSU scholarships are a donation from the SDSU Foundation to the city of Brookings. Um, we worked together with, um, Bonnie Specker in designing the program to determine a realistic scope. Um, through the different models, uh, we, we determined that, uh, the fifty thousand dollars in, in, in pricing would have a, a very good ROI or return on investment of about two hundred and forty-five percent under the assumption, um, for a public health benefit, that hospitalization, which is the one percent, I agree, but it would be around fifty-one thousand dollars of cost for those, um, people that end up hospitalized. So that's how we ended up creating this program. Our expect, our expectation is to get anywhere from five hundred to six hundred, um, individuals vaccinated, which would justify, um, the, the program. With that, I guess, do you guys have any questions on the design of the program? Michael's going to share the details of the program.
I would just add, as, as, um, we looked at this incentive program, actually, I believe, uh, councilmember, uh, Wendell brought this up here a few council meetings ago. We were actually looking at it a little bit in advance and saw a number of college communities had done this across the nation. In fact, our neighbor just to the south, Vermillion, has done it. And I, uh, communicated with the city manager here just a little bit ago. He said, as of today's date, they had about thirteen hundred individuals sign up for it. And so it's, we've taken what they've done, and I would say we've made it better, better, as we always tried to do.
Moving proven a little bit, so, um, so the city partnered with the Swiftel Center to help us execute this initiative.
Thanks, Eric. Um, as Eric stated, we, uh, the city's asked Swiftel Center to partner on this initiative. Uh, if you want to, yep, thanks. So I'll go through high-level, uh, rules and regulations of the program, how we developed it. Um, since the Swiftel Center obviously has a ticketing platform called Ticketmaster and, you know, great marketing team, we're able to, just like how we do a ticket giveaway, uh, is how we develop this. So if members of the community, council mayor, and if you want to go to the Swiftel Center, your shot, um, you can, it will take you to the registration page and you could register to win. If residents who don't have access to the internet, they can, um, use the city of Brookings library resources. I'll go through just real quick, just the eligibility of this. Uh, any legal resident of the United States or the resident of Brookings County, um, any student currently enrolled in South Dakota State University, living in Brookings County, and at least twelve years of age. Obviously, as you all know, that's the legal age to get a vaccine. Um, and if, at the time of entry, you have to have at least one dose of either vaccine. So with that, um, we came up with, um, as Eric shared, fifty thousand in prizes. So it's ten five thousand dollar, uh, prizes, and then the foundation kicked in ten one thousand dollar scholarships. Timeline of that, it's going to be a month, so it went live this morning at ten AM. So the cash winners will be announced on October fourteenth. Um, as you see in the timeline, it stops at October eleventh. Uh, this gives us a couple of days to get organized, um, and announce the winners on October fourteenth. Um, and then also on the scholarship winners, two will be announced weekly, um, starting this Friday, September seventeenth. And then also, uh, plan to do an event, um, later on in October. We'll have more details on that as of October first. And with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Okay, councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Michael, I think I understand what you noted about eligibility, but I wanted to reiterate it for folks. Um, to be eligible, you just have to have at least one dose of the vaccine, which means that folks that, um, have received the vaccine prior to the September fourteenth date, of course, are eligible as well. I know as counselors, we've gotten some questions about, about those that are vaccinated already or will be in the, uh, in the post-September fourteenth receiving one dose.
Yep, that's correct. So anybody that was, uh, been vaccinated previously to the rollout of the initiative is, um, eligible to register.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Tiltonburn?
For the differentiation between the five thousand dollar prizes and the scholarships, uh, do, do SDSU students, are they the only ones that kind of enter that scholarship pool? Can they opt to, um, enroll i- in the five thousand dollar prize? I just, how, how do those logistics work?
Yep, so the only, uh, so the scholarships is for current SDSU students. Um, and then the five thousand dollar prize is for, at, the whole pool of people that, um, registered to win.
Councilmember Wendell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a note of appreciation to, um, city leaders, Swiftel leaders, but also SDSU for partnering in this effort. I think one of the, um, areas of concern we've had as a council and as a community is just looking at how different age groups have participated in vaccination. And, uh, as so many counties in South Dakota, uh, you know, our older age groups are, are north of eighty percent in some cases in terms of their vaccination rate. But eighteen to thirty-nine year olds, of course, we have really low participation. So if this encourages those eighteen to thirty-nine, uh, to get, uh, a vaccine or to get that second dose if they've already gotten one, it, it really will have a phenomenal result in our community, given that our vaccination participation rate, uh, in that age group in particular is relatively low, and, and we want to ensure that, um, uh, we can, we can see it continue to tick up. So that partnership with SDSU is really crucial, and I, I appreciate their, their partnership and the partnership with the Swiftel.
Of course. Councilmember Tiltonburn?
Um, along those lines, um, it might be worth noting that, uh, SDSU has also recently announced that they are doing an incentive program of their own, um, for students, um, providing students with Hobo dough, uh, for doses that they receive. Um, and so, um, for, um, SDSU students, it seems that they have a couple of different options for great programs right now.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, SDSU Student Association report, Anna?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Anna Shane, the Gardener Affairs Chair for the SDSU Students Association. Happy to be back on their behalf tonight. Um, last night, the Students Association at our meeting approved Amendment twenty-one one A, remote voting incentive meetings. Vision ensures that students who are quarantining or have something like that befall them or they are able to participate virtually, um, are able to. So it kind of just cleans up our language to allow for maximum participation. We also approved the constitution of the Food Recovery Network Organization on campus. Regarding the Student Promotion Fund Committee, we have that committee assembled, and we will be meeting to hear our first three applications already next week, hopefully. Finally, moving into university updates. The fifth annual One Day for State was on September second, where five thousand four hundred and thirty-eight donors came together to raise over one point nine million dollars to directly benefit students, faculty and programs. It was an awesome day of unity and Jack Rabbit pride. Jack's Bash Two was last Wednesday night, which was a fun night of music and friendship, celebrating the five-year anniversary of the Dana J. Dykhouse Stadium. Jerry Lawar announced a generous gift of five million dollars, um, two hundred thousand a year to the Jay Lawar College of Engineering. The dean, the dean of the college will strategically distribute the dollars through the college, providing tremendous benefit and allowing the college to continue in its tradition of excellence. The Raven Precision Agriculture Center had its grand opening on Saturday. The building is the result of years of planning and work and is an innovative game changer for students in Precision Egg at SDSU. Yesterday, a fifty million dollar renovation to Frost Arena, which will be First Bank and Trust Arena, was announced. And finally, there was a COVID-nineteen vaccine clinic last Thursday where a hundred and sixty-two doses were administered, um, and there will be another one on October seventh in the student union. And as was mentioned, um, there's an incentive of fifty dollars Hobo dough for students who participate in that. This concludes my report. Thanks for your time, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Anna, comments? Thank you, Anna. Okay, at this time, any member of the public may request time on the agenda for an item not listed. Open forum.
Hello, Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. I just have a couple of comments about, uh, the last meeting when we passed your resolution recommending masks. Ms. Bacon was not here. Mr. Avery, Ms. Brink and Mr. Collins were all seated up there, not wearing any masks. Ms. Brink, the city manager, and the city attorney were wearing masks. The mayor and Mr. Wendell. The mayor and Mr. Wendell were sitting in their seats, just as they are now, with their masks down around their chest. They were having their conversations and drinking, preparing for the meeting. When the mayor announced, "We will convene our meeting in one minute", then, they both lifted up their masks, called the meeting into order, and began as usual. So, this whole masking by you two guys is all a show. Why weren't you sitting with your mask on, like you were at this meeting, prior to the meeting? Why did you bother lifting them up? You guys were all just playing a game with the public, trying to convince them to wear a mask. And now, you're, you're trying to bribe people to take the shot? The people who have wanted the shot already have just gotten the shot. You're making, you're running, you're trying to coerce them to get the shot by giving them money. If, I don't know what the final odds are going to be, about how many people will be entered. If you're allowing people who have already gotten the shot to be entered in the contest, isn't that defeating the purpose? The purpose is to incentivize those who haven't gotten the shot to get the shot. So, putting people who have already gotten the shot into the pool does nothing. It just reduces the people who actually got into the pool to get the money to get the shot, get the, get the reward. So, I would say that I, like I said, I don't know what the odds of winning the prize are going to be, because that will be determined by the amount of entries into the pool. But I would say that I have a better shot of catching COVID than I do of getting a prize from you guys for getting the shot. Again, this whole masking is for show. You guys, the meeting before last, none of you were wearing masks. And then, when it comes time to pass, pass your resolution, all of a sudden, the masks appear. Thank you for your time.
Mayor and city council. I've recently attended the school board meetings concerning the masks, and I do not like the direction that things are heading there. And so, I just want to revisit my thoughts on masks here in front of the city council. I also want to restate my requests for information from my city council members and my mayor. If we're going to talk about masks for our citizens, we need to be told the potential benefits as well as the risks. And that's your responsibility to tell us. You work for us, and that's information that I want. So, I'm going to leave my email address, so that there's contact information. And I also think I'll put a deadline of that, of Friday this week, so that I get my information. According to the FDA, there is no COVID-approved face mask for public use. Our city council is not authorized to impose life and business-altering orders, or so-called health measures, on any healthy asymptomatic person. The masks, the tests for SARS-CoV-2, and the vaccines have never been FDA-approved. Therefore, all of these are just under emergency use authorization only. Emergency use authorization, EUA, requires informed consent and right to refusal. And just so that you know, I will continue with my stance of I do not comply, no matter what mandates are passed by my city council members. So, I brought along a document from the Children's Health Defense. They have their lawyers and legal counsel put together information to help individuals who are facing these types of situations. So, this document, I'll also leave a copy. This serves as notice that the mandate for any individual to wear a mask against COVID-19 for employment or attendance at a university or other institution violates federal law. All masks, other than the NIOSH-approved N95 particulate-filtering face respirators, are not approved or licensed by the federal government. They are authorized under EUA and may not be mandated. They are merely, they merely may be effective. Federal law states, Title 21 U.S.C. 360BBB, 3E, 1A, 2, 1 through 3 of the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, individuals to whom the product is administered are informed that the secretary has authorized the emergency use of the product, the significant known and potential benefits and risks of such, of the extent to which such benefits and risks are known, and of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. I'll close by just saying that fear is a liar, and courage is contagious. Many of us are immune to the brainwashing and immune to the mass psychosis. I do not comply.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? We're open forum. Seeing none, Item 6, Contracts of Change Orders, we have none tonight. First readings and ordinance, we don't have any. Item 8A, Second Reading and Public Hearing. An action on Ordinance 21-031, an ordinance certifying the 2022 City of Brookings Property Tax Levy to the Brookings County Finance Officer. Our CFO, Eric Rangel, will explain.
Good, good evening. This ordinance requests authorization to certify the 2022 property tax levy request of $3,659,001 to the Brookings County Finance Officer per state statute. As Jake mentioned in his presentation, this amount, this proposed amount starts with our previous request, and we add a growth factor of, in this case, of 3.1618%. Then, we add a consumer price index factor of 1.2% to land at our proposed level. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any council questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk, city clerk, please call the roll.
Meier.
Hi.
Tiltonburn.
Hi.
Wendell.
Hi.
Avery.
Hi.
Bacon.
Hi.
Brink.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes 8B. Second reading in action on Ordinance 21-029, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation, number four, to the 2021 budget. Our CFO, Eric, will, Rangel, will explain this item.
Yes, good evening again. And like, it was mentioned, this ordinance is seeking approval for supplemental appropriation to the 2021 budget, number four, and consists of nine parts, which are all in the table above. I'll briefly describe each of them. So, the part number one, it's requesting to transfer $1.4 million in funds from the City Council Priority Project Fund to the Capital Improvements Fund for facility repairs, performing or analyzing the McKeenster Study back in 2019. This is not incremental to a 2021 budget, as it was already budgeted for it. Part number two is requesting to transfer $11,863 from the general fund reserves to close the market, the Marketplace Capital Fund project. This request is not incremental, and it is just considered to be a bookkeeping item. Request number three is requesting the transfer of $3 million from the General Fund Economic Development Reserves, also from, the $3 million in total, they're going to be funded from these three funds, the General Fund Economic Development Reserves, the Special Assessment Fund, and the Storm Drainage Fund to fund the 15th and 7th Capital Project Fund, or which is also our TIF 10, for the engineering and construction expenditures. These funds will be partially paid back with TIF revenues. And this request is not incremental to the budget, as it was already considered in the Special Assessment and the Storm Drainage Funds. The fourth part is requesting the transfer of $522,200 from the City Council Priority Funding, Priority Project Funding Fund to fund the, the project management and the design and engineering for the Public Safety Center. This is just to get started with the project, and any future agreements would be brought forward to the city council to get approved. This request would be incremental to the 2021 budget. Item number five is requesting to allocate $41,000 from the Capital Syncing Fund to address deficiencies in the city's tool supply for fleet maintenance. This request is not incremental, as it's just distributing the funds from the Syncing Fund into the respective department for the tools. Item number six is requesting to utilize landfill reserves in the amount of $975,000 to fund a new compactor to mitigate further expenses repairing failures of the current equipment. This item was originally budgeted for 2022, but given the current need, we're asking to move it to 2021. So, it would be incremental for this year's budget, but it would be reduced in 2022. Item number seven is requesting the transfer of $35,000 from the City Council Priority Project Funding to the Brookings Economic Development Corporation to partially fund the county's housing study. This request would be incremental to the 2021 budget. Part number eight is requesting to assign $40,000 of expected 2021 revenue surplus to fund the 10-year financial management plan discussed in the, in the 2022 budget presentation. This would be incremental to the 2021 budget. And lastly, part number nine is requesting to allocate $17,500 from the Capital Syncing Fund to perform urgent roof repairs to the Armory City Building. This request is not incremental to the 2021 budget. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Okay, entertain, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Are there any questions from the council or comments? Councilmember Brink.
I was just going to ask if you could remind everyone the difference between incremental and non-incremental, as it relates to these items.
Very good question. So, incremental will be anything that is not approved or passed during the 2021 budget, or through the amendment so far. So, when I say it's not incremental, it's already considered in the 2021 budget. Incremental is something that is net new to the 2021 budget.
So, Eric, I have a question on the compactor. So, just so we know, this compactor isn't a box that crushes things. It's actually a payloader that's got wheels on it that pack the landfill material down, correct?
Correct, and Jake would be able to provide more information on that one.
Just so everybody's on the same page. The other thing is too, is this was up for CIP budget item for next year, correct?
2022, yes.
Right, and so, we're just bringing it ahead, just because the repairs on the existing one are just getting carried away?
It's, it's already beyond their life, it's life expectancy, and we've been having a lot of breakdowns.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Tiltonburn.
Hi.
Wendell.
Hi.
Avery.
Hi.
Bacon.
Hi.
Brink.
Hi.
Meier.
Hi. Motion passed.
Permit to establish a mixed-business and residential use in a B3-heavy district on Lot 1, Block 2, in Folsom Edition, also known as 530 First Street South, and Lots 2 and 3, Block 2, in Folsom Edition, also known as 110 Sixth Avenue South. Mike struck our community development director, will review this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This conditional use request is actually for a property located just south of the railroad tracks, right on the corner of Sixth Avenue. It's kind of a redevelopment project. There is an existing shop on the corner. You can see on the overhead, it's kind of in the northwest corner. There is a house that's located on the lots to the south that would be removed if this is approved. This is a mixed-use project in a B3 district. The applicants are proposing seven contractor shops, storage units, on the first level with four two-bedroom apartments above those contractor shops. This does come to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission on a 4 to 2 approval. However, staff and the development review team have recommended denial based upon the compatibility of the intensity of these types of uses. And I'll explain this a little bit. The B3 is a heavy business district. This is very similar to our industrial districts. We would not allow residential housing living in the I-1 industrial district. I've had some questions over the last few weeks of how do you differentiate between some of our mixed-use projects downtown, as well as some of the ones you see on, on Main Avenue, or on Sixth Street, where you have your, your business use on the main level with, you know, residential units above, or even two, three stories above? And I guess my response to them is, is those types of uses are public uses, in that they're public assembly-type uses with office areas, restaurants, drinking establishments, retail operations. So, there's a general assumption that when you offer spaces available to the public to frequent, that there's certain standards that are upheld, and certain inspections that are done outside of what the city would do. And in particular, with certain types of businesses or restaurants, there's the health inspectors that will come through periodically. When you get into these types of situations with contractor shops, storage units, there isn't that level of public availability. And so, you do not know for certain what types of uses or materials will be stored inside. And so, that's where staff and the development review team come to their recommendation of, we just feel that these are not real compatible types of uses. The intensities are not what we would encourage, and that's where our recommendation comes. And I would stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to approach this item? Can you state your name and, and your address?
Grant Loffelbine with Granite Properties, 505 First Street South.
Ted Elverson, Granite Properties, 505 First Street South.
This project would bring updated and efficient structure to, and not to mention with aesthetic value, to an area of town in need of all three. It's an opportunity for affordable housing near downtown. And while being too far off the beaten path for retail, for retail use, it's a great location for contractor and personal shops. This building is proposed to be sprinkled with a two-hour firewall, separating the apartments from the shops. We've included covenants for concerns with hazmat, exterior storage, and noise concerns. And I will, I'll read those. Tenant number one, or, excuse me, covenant number one. Tenants' use of the premises shall comply in all material respects with all hazardous material laws, including but not limited to OSHA standard 1926.152 for material storage. And I have reached out to the SDSU OSHA Extension, and they're willing to help us maintain compliance with these standards. Tenants agree to maintain all storage of equipment and materials within the interior confines of their rented unit, with the exception of exterior vehicle parking, which is limited to against the front side of their rented unit unless rear parking is specified. And regarding exterior storage, it's worth noting that there, we would have to apply for a separate permit to have any equipment or materials on pallets outside of the rented unit. So, it's a little bit redundant in that respect, but we wanted to include it anyway. Tenant agrees to limit all noise-producing work activities, etc., between, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And we, oh, and we also did receive approval of the project from the one homeowner in close proximity to the north. The main concern with these covenants, or with, with this project, seems to be, from the DRT, that we, we would not enforce the covenants. We have every reason to enforce all of these covenants. If we do not, we, we wouldn't, we will not be able to rent the units above. And I guess, with that, I guess I would stand by for questions. I just want to reiterate that we would, we have every reason and every desire. And we, we work right across the street as well. So, we want this place, we want this area of town to, to look nice. We want this to be a, a clean area of town that people want to visit. And with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we close, well, close public hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's no second, motion fails. Okay, move on to the next item. 8D, Public Hearing in Action on Ordinance 21-025, An Ordinance Establishing Zoning an ordinance establishing zoning regulations for cannabis establishments. Mike Strucker, Community Development Director, will review this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Seems like it's deja vu again. We're back here with this one. This is the cannabis ordinance. I think it's just a couple of quick cleanup items from the previous ordinances that you've seen, and I'll point those two out for your attention. Is with a cultivation facility, we wanted to add in, one of the criteria is that all of the operations shall be within a completely enclosed building. In talking with some of the peers from Colorado that had experienced that, they said this is one of the areas with the cultivation side of things. You can really have some pretty extreme smells and such, and so it'd be best to try and keep it within an enclosed building. And then it also provides additional security. And then the other item is after meeting with the county and kind of reviewing our joint jurisdiction zoning area, and then kind of debating who would have the authority to actually issue a license in this area, we decided it was best at this time to prohibit any type of cannabis establishments within the joint jurisdiction area. And I think part of the emphasis behind that is, is the city would technically have the zoning jurisdiction, but there were some questions about who would have the administrative rights to issue the actual license, since it would be outside of municipal corporate boundaries. So with those two changes, we do recommend approval of the ordinance. And I'd stand by for any questions you may have.
Okay, open up for public hearing. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, item eight F, public hearing in action on a request to transfer an on-off sale malt liquor, or malt license from KAM USI LLC DBA Aqua Fresh Sinentaskin. I'm going to stab at that. And then Bilal Alkalin, owners to DA LAK LLC DBA Aqua Fresh Bilal Alkalin, owner 420 Main Avenue. Legal description, the south 2,000 square feet of Lot 11A, Block 6, original plaid edition. Our city clerk will review this item for us.
Councilmembers and mayor and audience, this is for a transfer of an existing malt license, which is held by Aqua Fresh. The former partnership is being dissolved, and therefore Bilal Alkalin is resuming sole ownership of the facility. We have done a redrawing of the licensed area for this alcohol license. It did incorporate the entire, on your screen, you will notice the yellow box. It did incorporate the entire property prior. This new transfer will be only the red highlighted portion, or the south 2,000 square feet of the facility. So it will incorporate only the Aqua Fresh facility, along with the commercial kitchen located at this location. So all required documents have been received by the party, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, I was just informed that I missed an item tonight, so we'll go back to that. Any, we'll open this for a public hearing. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any county or council discussions or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Brink.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Okay, let's go to A G, since it's the same criteria. Public hearing in action on Resolution 21-071, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a wine operating agreement for Dalak LLC DBA Aqua Fresh 420 Main Avenue. Legal description, the south 2,000 square feet of Lot 11A, Block 7, original plaid edition. Bonnie will also review this item.
Mayor, councilmembers and public, this is for the wine license located at this address. This too is the same partnership which was dissolved. And so this would allow the city manager to enter into a 10-year operating agreement with Bilal, and it would be a midterm renewal in five years. And this too, this license will only be good for that southern 2,000 square feet, which incorporates the Aqua Fresh and the commercial kitchen area. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Bonnie. Open public hearing. No comments or in public hearing, please call that. And we will go to a motion, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Okay, let's shift back to eight E, one that I missed. Public hearing in action on a temporary alcohol application for Eponymous Brewing Company and Shawday Winery to operate within the city limits, or City of Brookings, South Dakota, for the disrupt HR event to be held September 30, 2021, at Pioneer Park, 104 Sixth Street West. Bonnie Foster, our city clerk, will review this item.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is for the Brookings Area Human Resources Association event, which was to have originally taken place on September 2nd, but that event was rained out. So this is their rain date, September 30th. All the same details that we went through at the prior meeting approving the original date stand as is. Just the meeting date changed, so they are very excited to work forward and put a temporary date, rain date, on the calendar, and looking forward to a successful event. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Bonnie. Open to the public hearing. Seeing no comments or questions, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any council questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto item eight H. Public hearing in action on a request for an on-off sale malt license with Video Lottery for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Corporation DBA Deuces Casino. Bryant Solberg and Kirby Mullenberg, owners 2023 Sixth Street, Suite 105D. Legal description, south 114 feet of the west 69.3 feet of Lot 20, and the south 114 feet of Lot 21, Block 3, Henry Edition, Suite 105D. Pending occupancy permit issue and final inspection per the Community Development Department. Bonnie Foster, city clerk, will review this item.
Mayor, councilmembers and audience, this is for an additional malt license to be located at the Deuces Casino, current location on Sixth Street, right next to Cinema 8. This would allow them to add a fourth suite. They currently have Suites A, B, and C at this location. This will be adding Suite D. They do need a malt license in order to add an additional suite for 10 more Video Lottery machines at this location. This action is just for approval of the malt license. Video lottery action will be held separately, the next item on the agenda. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, open to the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye. Okay, item eight I. Public hearing in action on Video Lottery request for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Corporation DBA Deuces Wild. Bryant Solberg and Kirby Mullenberg, owners 223 Sixth Street, Suite 105D. Legal description, south 114 feet of the west 69.3 feet of Lot 20, the south 114 feet of Lot 21, Block 3, Henry Edition, Suite 105D. Pending occupancy permit issue and issuance, and final inspection per the Community Development Department. Our city clerk will review this item.
Mayor, councilmembers and public, this is on the request for the Video Lottery for this location. If the council so approves, this would allow up to 40 machines to be at this location, 10 machines located in each suite. There will be four suites, which abide by state laws regarding the separate instances in the walls and the doors and the alcohol-serving stations as well. So any questions, please let me know. This item is pending the occupancy permit issuance from the Community Development Department upon your approval as there is construction which needs to take place at this location. Staff does recommend approval.
Hey, open this up to a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public, any questions? Seeing none, close public hearing, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the, oh, Leah, please.
I did have a question, and maybe I can assume this from the drawing, but I just wondered if, given the spatial requirements for an additional suite, would we consider four to be the maximum allowed in this space? Or there'd be no way to carve out another fifth one?
You know, it depends on how creative they want to be. You know, right now, as it stands with the four suites, it meets state law requirements. If they were to come forward with a fifth suite in this location, we would review it like we did any others.
So there's not a physical footprint required for each of those bays exactly? It's just whether or not, okay, thank you.
Bonnie, I'm seeing that there's an east entrance and a separate entrance into this suite also?
Correct.
And I guess the question is, is whoever's in that suite has to go all the way over to the other Suite 105A to get a beverage?
No, each individual suite would have their own serving, sales, alcohol location.
Okay.
So whether it's a cooler in that suite that meets the state law need.
And that would meet the requirements?
Sure does.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, item nine, other business. Item 98, action on Resolution 21-073, a resolution approving the purchase of a 2022 Caterpillar compactor through Sourcewell Contract Number 32119-CAT. Our Assistant City Manager will review this item.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the council. The landfill compactor which was purchased in 2010 has been experiencing increasingly costly service repairs amounting to over $180,000 in the last three years. Earlier this evening, City Council passed a budget amendment which would in part allow for the purchase of a new compactor in the current year as opposed to the scheduled replacement in 2022. Resolution 21-073 would allow for the purchase of a 2022 Caterpillar compactor through Sourcewell from Butler Machinery Company in Sioux Falls for $921,666.86, which is under the initial estimates of $975,000. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 21-073, and would stand for any questions.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any council questions or comments? One I've got, Jake, is the old one going to be put up for surplus then? Or is it being part of the trade-in?
Yeah, we would explore the opportunity for surplusing. Given its current condition, we'd have to provide an assessment on what the value of that machinery may be.
All right, thank you, Jake. Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon. Brink.
Aye.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Okay, that's pretty much the gist of the meeting tonight. Item 10, City Council Member Introduction of Topics for Future Discussion. Do we have any, any opportunities for anybody that wants to bring something up? Okay, advanced agenda, September 28th meeting. We've got Brookings Health, in the consent agenda, we've got trustees appointments for Brookings Health, SDSU comments. We have a proclamation, budget hearing obviously again. Meeting will start at 5:00, and then regular meeting at 6:00. And then we're looking at other business, such as medical cannabis licensing fees and fees for medical cannabis licenses. And then we'll also get our coveted Assistant City Manager's City Progress Report for the month. And with that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.